But...
...twenty fourteen to order. It's always a wonderful time to see all these blessed people here in our audience tonight. And we would also ask that, don't wait till there's any kind of controversy or anything. Y'all come anytime.
Amen.
Okay, we're gonna start our prayer and our pledge will be led by members of the Forest Park Forever Friends Youth Group. Taquita Mumfree of Partners in Prevention is their coordinator.
Father, dear mother, Father, thank you for today and thank you for your presence. We're thanking you that we can all be here for our country and for our children. And if you make your decisions, they don't cost anything to me.
Amen. Go ahead.
(Inaudible) United States of America. Into the republic of which stands one nation, united in the ritual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I told you there was a five-second feeling. Alright, y'all gonna, y'all gonna introduce yourselves? Y'all come tell us your names before y'all leave. Y'all look so pretty. Okay, everybody gotta say their names. Alright, next person to come up. Holicia. Okay. 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 Okay, go ahead. Okay, and the lady in the stripes, we didn't hear your name. What's your name? Angel. Oh, yeah. Say the best for last, right? Okay. Thank y'all for being here. Y'all did a great job. We're gonna start off with our citizen comment and a couple of things. We also have some citizen comment cards on the action item regards the Orwell. And I'm gonna ask council that we'll hold those cards for now. And we'll allow those people to talk when that action item comes up, just because of the number of other cards we have. Is that okay? Okay, I wanna make a comment or two before we get started. It's just looking at the cards and things that have taken place over the last week. As the mayor of Longview, I wanna start off with, you know, making an apology to the community. Things that have taken place was never the intentions of the city council or the city of Longview. Unfortunately, due to inexperience and lack of communication, some of our staff members were very unaware of entertainment contracts as acts were being vetted in order to consider being invited over to our Fourth of July celebration. Unfortunately, sometimes good intentions don't always end up as good, as is this particular case. However, decisions were made once it was brought to the administration. I concurred with the decision made then. I concur now. This particular act was very polarizing to our community, as is evidenced by the amount of correspondence, emails, text messages, phone calls that I've received where half of the people thought we made the right decision. Half of the people thought we made a poor decision. And I understand both sides. But however, in my heart and what we were trying to do and I thought what was best for the community, we made the right decision. And again, I apologize as a mayor, the buck stops here, that we ever got ourselves to a point of having to make that decision. But if it was to do over again, I'd make the same decision because I believe it was the right decision. So, we have a number of speaker cards tonight. And I'm gonna ask the speakers, we will allow three minutes. There's a, right here by pastor, there's a little light. It starts off green when you start talking, it'll go to amber. When it goes to red, buzzes your times up with asks that you take your seat at that time. We wanna give everybody their opportunity to speak, okay? We're gonna start with Jim Martin.
I'm not really concerned about Ted Nugent. I don't even know what he sings, never heard him. I don't listen to the radio. What I'm concerned about is a taxpayer's $16,000 money. Then it was another deal I'm concerned with. When Chuck Ewing left, we gave him $50,000. That's money, in my opinion, wasted. It's a few more things I've seen, in my opinion, in this town being done wasted. And I think one of them's about $2 million on sidewalk somewhere. If they wasn't put in when the subdivision of the street was there, we don't need them. I can't see doing it and wasting money when we got pothole city all over this town. One of them was there by the fire station in Greton. They finished it, fixed it this past week for the fourth time, or this week, I can't remember, in less than a year. I don't know what's causing it. I know it's a lot of traffic there and the firemen's turn there all the time and those big trucks, but I'm not blaming them. I just, as a taxpayer, that my property tax keep going up every year. And I'm still living in the same house, have done nothing to it. I'm afraid to paint it, afraid they might really get outrageous on going up on my property tax. And my personal opinion, great county tax appraisal should be removed. And I'm asking tonight, personally coming from me, that the mayor and the city manager resign from their job. And let's get somebody maybe that we can come in here instead of wasting money. Because that contract, or that guy should have been checked out before you sign the contract with him. So I'm recommending that you two step down from your job as of in the morning. Because I can't see keep wasting this money and promoting people up and giving them a different title for more money. When you got workers out there in the street department of garbage, kinda like them garbage pails, I think is a waste. We got good garbage trucks, use them. Maybe when you, they run off and they're out of commission, buy a new one. But at this particular time, I can't see it. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Victoria Wilson. Victoria Wilson.
Good evening. Glad to be here. Here's a little light to whatever else is going on here tonight. Celebrate Authors: Telling Your Story is coming April 3rd, 4th, and 5th. I'm just gonna give a little update. First, I wanna praise the library staff. They have done an outstanding job, even though I think I've overwhelmed them a little bit with suggestions. They've jumped on board and really have worked hard to make this a great event. We have author four, over forty authors coming from all over the United States. People are bringing friends and family. And so what's gonna happen with that is we're gonna have hotel rooms to fill up. Friday night, we're gonna have a Celebrate Authors event at Barron's using one of our local restaurants. So we're inviting all the community and the authors will be there, so you'll be able to visit with them, mingle with them there. And Julia Barron is really thrilled about that. We have, over the genre of authors that we have are gonna be nonfiction, fiction, children's books, young adult, Christian writers. And that's gonna really make the event something that's gonna be able to affect everyone. And I would like to really thank, on Thursday night, we will have the meet and greet. We have four bakeries that have agreed to make and donate their cakes for a cake tasting contest. And we will also open it with our honorary chair, Dr. Peggy Coghlan, who was very instrumental in getting that library built. I would like to thank Ms. Williams. She has made a great endorsement to this event, as well as a commitment. And I would also like to be able to thank you gentlemen in advance and hope that you will all show at some point during that three days and visit your library. It is, it's something that we really need to support. And we need to let that be a shining light. I'm not sure that we're on a hill, but we might be after tonight. But in lieu of that, for Longview, because it is one of our best assets that we have for people coming to this community. And I have some flyers, I'm gonna leave them outside for people to pick up as they leave. Thank you all.
Thank you. I'm probably gonna not pronounce his last name correctly, but Darren D. Olak. Can't understand it right.
That'd be Darren Olak.
Olak, okay.
Wow, good job, Tim. I'd like to say I'm a musician and I've never been paid for getting hired for a gig and then being canceled on it. $16,000 seems like a lot of money, taxpayers' money. And what are the reasons given? The young kids don't know him. So your alternative is, is who? Ted Nugent, he's a, he's a bit radical, but he's an American. Does a lot for the veterans, does a lot for conservationism. Doesn't drink, doesn't smoke. I'd just like an answer as to what the reasoning was. Was it political? Was it otherwise? Just don't like his music? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Johnny Stafford. Johnny Stafford.
Hello. This is my first time to speak. Just go ahead and say what I wanna say. I'm here about the H&amp;T Orwell matter out on Hoyt Drive, is it?
Okay, hang on just one second. They had, we're gonna have that item here in a couple of minutes. Can I hold your card and call you back for that?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. We're gonna put that with that action item. Thank you. Okay, Bishop LJ Gilry.
Amen. First giving honor to God, Mr. Mayor, City Council. How are you all doing today?
Alright.
I stand today for Embusman International. We're a government oversight agency. And after being contacted with regards to the incident with, we call it Tedgate, we did our own separate investigation, looking into some matters. And we would like to say that we think that your local NAACP, your local pastors, the persons from the city, I had a short meeting today with the city manager. I think that you all are doing an exemplary job at resolving the situation. When you could take lemons and make lemonade, then you're doing something right. It's easy for people to come and attack when they don't understand. And for those that, you know, may say that, well, there's one side against the other. We're all citizens. We're all paid taxes. And if there's gonna be a person who's gonna be invited. I was told when I first came to Texas fourteen years ago that this town, like many other towns around here, is the Bible Belt. And whether I respect the Republican, the Democrat, or whatever, I think that there are people that if they think about it, I'm from Compton. That's where I'm from. And we have rappers that use the same type of language calling females out of their name that there are pastors in this community that would not like to have their children to be at an event and have someone who have explicit lyrics saying those type of things. And I take my hat off to this mayor and your city council to stepping up and dealing with this matter the way you have. I think if you keep the lines of communication open with the civic groups that are here tonight, you will not only rise above this, but you will continue to be a progressive city in East Texas. And to be in the position where I am, where I come in when there's a problem, I've been to Jasper, Texas. I've been to Tyler, Texas. I've been to Nacogdoches, and Lufkin, and Jacksonville. And I think that this is a darn good town. And I think that you guys are working very hard and I'm proud of you. God bless you and continue to good work.
Thank you, Pastor. Kathy Sommer.
That would be me. I'm Kathy Sommer. I would just like to say that, a few things. Who made the decision to bring Ted Nugent to this town? Is it because he's a spoke voice for the conservative party, a strong advocate of gun ownership? He is against animal rights? He has even said that there's, he doesn't think there's anything funnier than people who think that animals have rights just stick an arrow through their lungs. He referred to Heidi Prescott of the Fund for Animals as a worthless whore and a shallow slut. These are his words. These are direct quotes. Asking who needs to club a seal when you can club Heidi? He was ordered by a court to pay her $75,000. Anybody who has access to the internet can find anything on Ted Nugent. Whoever made the decision to bring him here, where was the city attorney? Is that not what a city attorney is for? That we have spent $16,000 of taxpayers' money? There are people whose homes are foreclosed upon because they cannot even pay the taxes and they go to the sheriff's cell. That is an abomination. Whoever did this, who made this decision, they need to be fired immediately. I have never held down a job where I can make a $16,000 mistake and live there and stay working there. That's not ever gonna happen. It's never happened for me. I would have been out the door in a heartbeat. To squander that kind of money is horrible. Anyone who can read the background on this man knows precisely what he stands for. He was just touring with Abbott not long ago. We know who he stands for. We know what he stands for. He's a board member of the NRA. He has radical views. And the man who just spoke about that he was never paid for a canceled gig and he doesn't see anything wrong with Ted Nugent, I beg your pardon. Ted Nugent is way more than a musician. Thank you.
Steve Crane. Steve Crane. Steve Crane. I see him coming through the crowd.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Alright.
City Council, fellow citizens of Longview. I stand here today to say that the matter is not behind us. A decision was made not to have Mr. Nugent come, but that is not the problem. The problem is, is that people in the city of Longview, people in leadership positions, felt that it was okay to invite somebody of Ted Nugent, like Ted Nugent, to this, to this city for a citywide celebration. If it had been a private promoter, that's one thing. But not the city of Longview. And to kinda parody what some of the other folks are saying about the $16,000, that's more money than one minimum wage worker earns after forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks a year. That's a lot of money. Back in 2011, in November, the city created an investigative committee. And they investigated some allegations of wrongdoing in the city of Longview's housing department. I think that another committee needs to be created and made up of some citizen input. And that there needs to be an investigation to find out who was involved and a timeline of when things started, when the decision was made, how the decision was made, and to make a report to the citizens of Longview so that we have a full explanation of how this came about. And then, we have to have a process in place that will allow, that will, that will make sure that we don't make this same mistake again. I think the city of Longview, the citizens of Longview demand a fuller explanation and that people held accountable. These people in this article were suspended and placed on six-month probation. What are we gonna be doing here in the city of Longview to the people that were involved in this decision? This was plastered all over the paper. And I hope that Mr. Yakeley in the Longview News Journal brings more of this to light. But I'd like the city council to make sure that be proactive on this issue and create a committee. And let's get to the bottom of this, find out what happened. Because if there is some political motivation involved, I can't help but wonder if the people in the decision-making process felt like, wouldn't it be really cool to invite somebody like Ted Nugent to have an anti-Obama rally? I mean, ridiculous, maybe, but let's have an investigation. Let's bear that out.
Thank you, Mr. Crane.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. I got, is it Don Weaver, AKA Uncle Dallas?
Mayor, council, Longview citizens. I played this town since I was fourteen years old. I'm sixty-two now. It's not the town it used to be. Through disco, the bars, the boats, karaoke, there's not much left here, sir, for us live musicians and entertainment. And I would like things to change and get a little bit better, like it used to be in the good days when I did play Mike's Supper Club. God bless live music, sir. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Uncle Dallas. Alright, my last two cards, I got Vic and Brandon. Brandon, you got on yours, you wanna go last. Vic, you wanna go last?
I would like to go first. I'd like to go before Brandon, if that's okay.
Oh, okay. Got some plot going on here. Alright, come on, Vic. Subplot.
Good evening, Mayor, Dean, members of council. My name is Vic Verma. I am here in my role as the vice chair of the City of Longview's Unity and Diversity Committee. First, I wanna thank Councilwoman Cassia Williams for her vote against the city manager's reorganization plan. She recognized that diversity matters and that there are legitimate concerns with processes that the city uses to hire those in leadership positions. And as we look at the decisions made by city staff in inviting Ted Nugent, there's a direct relationship to the issues related to the reorganization. Diversity is important in providing opportunity, but it is also important in defining a culture that the city of Longview has within its ranks. The current culture shows that the selection of Ted Nugent to perform at the city of Fourth of July celebration was acceptable and even desired by some. This was true even though the event was billed as a family-friendly event. This was true even though Mr. Nugent's misogynistic, sexist, and vulgar lyrics are anything but family-friendly. The culture within the walls of the city did not recognize the severe problems that a concert with Mr. Nugent would provide. So why did the culture see fit to invite Mr. Nugent to perform? Was it the singer's provocative comments aimed at President Obama and other elected officials? Comments that merited a Secret Service visit at one point? Quite frankly, that is what he is known for these days. His musical heyday has long since passed. Are Ted Nugent's comments popular within the city of, within the culture of the city of Longview? If the answer is yes to the questions posed, then you need to develop a new culture. And I do believe that you need to develop a new culture. I will also note that the multicultural festival, a project of the Unity and Diversity Committee, will be a part of the city Fourth of July celebration this year. It was not a decision taken lightly by the committee, but it was viewed as a mutually beneficial change by both the city and the committee. I myself will be serving as the co-chair of the multicultural festival this year. However, there was somehow an expectation that we should coexist with the likes of Ted Nugent, who are completely antithetical to the committee's values. We had no knowledge or say with regards to the Ted Nugent selection. If the Ted Nugent concert had gone forward, what am I supposed to say to our committee who agreed to make this change? We don't view the multicultural festival as a box to check off regarding diversity. We view the multicultural festival as an important event that is beneficial to the culture and environment of Longview. And we expect the city to treat the event with the appropriate respect. Bringing Ted Nugent to Longview does not show that respect. In summary, it is my hope that this difficult episode will lead the city to become introspective and examine the cultural and process issues that are causing problems like this. At the last city council meeting, Councilwoman Williams expressed her concerns. I hope that the rest of the council will hear her. Thank you.
Thanks, Vic. Brandon Johnson.
Greetings.
Greetings.
Before my time starts, too bad, young lady. I would like to do two things. One, first and foremost, I thank you. I thank you for having the guts to get behind this and say no, make those phone calls, get on it. I understand it took you about three days to try to do it. You know, the outcome, whatever, you made the right choice. Alright, number two, I'd like everybody that we asked to come out to please stand, both in the house and in the foyer. Everyone, please stand. Alright, you can be seated. Now my time, I'm ready.
See, he's already over here juggling with the clock.
That's right.
Come on, your clock's running. Preach, preacher, preach.
So you can start now. Whereas the city of Longview is an organization that draws its strength from the diverse community it serves, we strive to create opportunities for all people to reach their fullest potential. That was a proclamation on diversity that this city gave last year. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." An excerpt from the Declaration of Independence. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity." An excerpt from our Constitution. Our processes are without principles currently. And I wonder if anyone currently remembers the ATIP acronym of the city. Our ability to lead is not solely our ability to delegate. Recent poor decisions made public appear to have lacked leadership. The decision rooted either in incompetency or bigotry, both which are unacceptable. A slap on the wrist, the removing of a task from a staff member are okay, but not enough. We need to rethink how we give authority to, how we avoid systemic issues, and how we can become more exclusionary not, but more inclusive, yes. Why we appear to exclude viable candidates for positions is still a question. The inability to find credentialed applicants in the minority community, I've learned, is a myth. The hope of diversity under the current Longview administration appears anecdotal. We've witnessed incidents occur where staffers get in trouble and all hell breaks loose. Then other incidents occur, and then we say, just, just let it blow over. Current city officials, both you elected and staff, appear to be exclusionary. We need a revival. So we plan to start holding symposiums across the city and the county in the hopes of invigorating, inspiring, and encouraging the ignored to get involved with this governmental process. We will show you how to accept opinions, religions, ethnicities, political views, and ages of all types. We will educate them on how to vote for historical voting purposes and how we can establish leadership that can go on the record. We'll bring you back ideas in the form of written and verbal requests. In the meantime, we need our city to run like a municipality, neutral.
Time's up. Thank you, sir. Alright, you got it in. Okay, that's all the speaker cards. Now, do y'all wanna stay for the rest of the meeting? You're welcome, or we can take a short recess. They're gonna stay for the meeting. Okay, thank y'all. Okay, we're gonna do present, a couple of proclamations, real quick. Okay, we're going to do present, a couple proclamations, real quick.
Thank you, Bishop.
Thank you, Bishop.
God bless you, okay?
God bless you all, too, and thank you all for coming. We've got a proclamation tonight recognizing lupus and autoimmune disease awareness rally, and I'd like to invite Tamara Pipkin to come forward. Tamara, you here? Okay, come on up here. Don't let that crowd get in your way now.
I'll do it.
How you doing?
All right.
All right. Okay, so this is lupus and autoimmune disease awareness rally, March 29, 2014. Lupus is one of many disorders of the immune system known as autoimmune diseases, and it's a chronic autoimmune disease in which a person's immune system mistakenly attacks healthy tissues, cells, and organs. Symptoms of lupus are unpredictable, ranging from extreme fatigue, skin rashes, severe joint inflammation, and muscle pain to organ failure and even death. At present, there is no cure for lupus, and the exact cause of lupus is unknown. However, research suggests it is caused by a combination of genetic and environmental factors. It is estimated that 1.5 million Americans suffer from lupus. More people than suffer disease such as leukemia, cerebral palsy, multiple sclerosis, and cystic fibrosis combined. Of the 16,000 Americans who develop lupus each year, more than 90% are women in their childbearing years between the ages of 15 and 45. So therefore, I jadeen by the authority vested me as mayor of the city of Longview, Texas, do hereby proclaim March 29 as East Texas Lupus and Autoimmune Disease Awareness Day in Longview. And I just, I just want to say that I have family and friends very close to me that suffer from this disease, so thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Donna Sharp with the Longview Community Ministries. Oh, is Elisa Simmons here also?
Yes.
Elisa Simmons, you here also? Come on. Don't be hiding back there. Elisa Simmons.
All right.
Uh-oh.
She can be trouble.
No. Come on up here to this dais. Okay. And we have some of our ministers here tonight, so this is a perfect time to read the Longview Community Ministries Week. The Longview Community Ministries continues to fill its mission, seeking new ways to collaborate and cooperate with churches, individuals, and civic groups to provide relief from human suffering. Longview Community Ministries maintains services of the LCM Supercenter, Service Center, Food Box Pantry, Meals on Wheels, Coats for Kids, and other programs. Longview Community Ministries' mission statement is to enable Longview congregations and groups to work together more effectively in the community through cooperative acts of service to assist people in need. So therefore, I jadeen by the authority vested me as mayor of the city of Longview, do hereby proclaim April 7 through the 11th, 2014, as Longview Community Ministries Week in Longview. Thank you all very much. I think I have. One more. We have one more. That's for you. Okay, all right.
And April 10th?
Excuse me, here you go. You don't want to let her talk?
Thank you so much. I have board members and volunteers and staff here. If you'll just wave, I'd like to recognize you. The week of April 7 through 11, we have a lot going on, but on Thursday, April 10, between 11:00 and 1:00, we invite you to come to our building at 506 North Second for an open house and tour. Thursday, April 10. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we also have National Autism Awareness Month for April 2014. April is recognized as National Autism Awareness Month, and April 12 will be celebrated as Family Fun Day for autism awareness. This is a time to recognize families and friends who suffer from the disorder. Positive People with Positive Attitudes is an organization which focuses on building healthy relationships within the community. Our purpose is to bring unity, direction, and to educate people to make a difference. The community is encouraged to join in the events on April 12 to help lead efforts to ensure that everyone has a right to live in conditions of opportunity, peace, dignity, and mutual respect. So therefore, I jadeen by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Longview, do hereby proclaim April as National Autism Month, and April 12 as Family Fun Day for autism awareness in Longview. Ms. Lisa.
I don't know why. You might have messed up giving me this mic. Thank you. Positive People with Positive Attitudes, would you please wave? Stand up. Yay. April.
Look, Brandon.
Brandon. On April 12, we will have our Family Fun Day for Autism Awareness at Teague Park from 10:00 to 3:00 PM, but you can also join by supporting Positive People with Positive Attitudes by dining out at Chili's in Kilgore on Tuesday, and Cheeseburger Cheeseburger in Longview on Wednesday. This is April 8 and April 9, and their donations will go to autism awareness.
All right, wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Y'all, thank you all for coming. Okay. Let's see. Okay, council consent agenda. I think I have, excuse me, presentation items. Let's get back to that. Presentation A of the fiscal year 2012-2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report from Henry &amp; Peters.
Thank you, Mayor, Dean, Council. I'm Rodney Overman with CPA firm of Henry &amp; Peters. From our Longview office here, I have with me Adrian Deason, who's a senior manager, audit manager, in our office here in Longview as well. We're here this evening to present the audit you engaged us to perform for the fiscal year-end September 30, 2013. Anticipating that this might be a lengthy meeting, we'll keep our comments very brief. Few things that I need to bring to your attention, mainly in an effort to convey the important points that you need to, that you would like to know from the audit. As you know, you engaged us to express an opinion based on our audits on the audited financial statements. There's three components to our audit. That's, that's, that's one of, one of those, that the financial statements are material, are correct in all material respects. Second, because you're a government entity receiving federal grants, you engaged us to express our opinion on whether the major grant programs we audited were in compliance with their respective compliance requirements. That's the second component of our audit. And then finally, any audit in accordance with government auditing standards requires us to report to you if we've identified during our audit any significant deficiencies in internal controls or related to the financial reporting and to the compliance with financial reporting. You'll be pleased to hear that we've, in, in the financial statements you have, the large book that you have there, there are three opinion letters that address each of these three components of the audit, and you'll be pleased to hear that we have issued unmodified reports, which means a clean opinion in all these areas, and we do not have any deficiencies to report to you this year. That's always the most important part of what you want to know, is, is what are the deficiencies? Obviously, we've had those in years past, and there aren't, there are none this year. In addition to the copy of the annual report, you've also got a letter that has some required written communications from our firm as the auditors to you, the council, because you're charged with governance of, of the, of the city. And I'd encourage you, beyond that letter, also in the, in the early pages of this audit report, and I've, I've mentioned this in years past, and I'll, and I'll continue to do so, there's a management discussion and analysis, about 12 pages. You can, and, and it's actually a communication from staff to, to the citizens as part of this report, and it, it brings down the information that most people want to know into, into 12 narrative pages. If you will read those, it'll give you the information that you, that you really need to know. Beyond that, to the extent there are specific programs or departments in the city that you want to know something about, that, that management discussion and analysis, we call it the MDA, will point you to the page number where you can find those things. So that, that, I would, I would urge you, at the very least, to read those pages of this report. It's a good synopsis. And I believe that was the only thing I had. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this point.
Okay, questions, council? If not, we appreciate y'all being here tonight. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Item B, presentation to council of a schematic for the animal shelter.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mr. Willard. That, before you tonight, is a presentation by Larry Conley of Larry Conley Architects. He is here to show you a schematic plan of the animal shelter that he has designed for the city of Longview. It is quite a site. You've seen Mr. Conley before, and I'm sure he would be happy to answer any questions that you may have after his presentation. Without further ado, I'll bring Mr. Conley forward, and I'll be around if I cannot answer something from a operational standpoint.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Conley.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Let's see if this works. This is the site plan. It's, the building is oriented along Pecos Street, and, and it puts it at an angle on HG Mosley Parkway. It makes it, it's, it is more of a, a more prominent way to address the street, having it at an angle feels as if it's more visible. The, this that I'm touching on right now is the public parking. There are two curb cuts to the public parking off of HG Mosley and as well as Pecos Street. And then there is a staff parking inside a service yard off of Pecos Street, and there's a, a loop around a Sallyport where the animals are unloaded. In addition, there is a public entrance for the public to be able to unload their animals should they, you know, they want to surrender them. And we made that entrance very distinct from the general public entrance, which is over here. This is the floor plan that I showed you last year, and it illustrates the difference between, I mean, basically, it's a, a two-gable roof with a connection in between. The front part in pink is, is all the area that is open to the public. And there are two doors that are locked and that the public cannot go into unless they're accompanied by staff. Back here are stray dogs. If, for example, your dog is impounded and you want to make sure that it is back there, you can be accompanied to the stray dog kennel and to see if indeed your animal is back This is, this is sort of a checklist for us to be able to ensure that we are being efficient in our, in our design. The animals come in at the Sallyport and at the surrender area, and they're distinguished, the lines are distinguished, the dogs are in blue and the cats are in purple, and they can come in from two different routes, from the Sallyport if they come in on a, in a mobile unit. And I'm having a hard time with this arrow. There we go. Or from the public surrendering them this way. And this is stray cat, and this is stray dogs. The animals that are deemed adoptable then enter, and this is Kathy Byss today spoke earlier about the, the advent of having a spay neuter clinic inside your facility. So when people adopt out animals from your facility, they're ready to go. You don't, there are no vouchers, and that's a huge convenience, and it's proven to be a, a really good thing in terms of reducing the homeless population, animal population and impounds. And then from after the surgery, they will go into the cat adoption area or the dog adoption area, and then out the front door. So you can see this path, path is, is very efficient. Fast forward to where we are today, this is the most recent plan, and basically, it is just a little more detailed than the, of the previous plan that you saw earlier. There are a few minor differences, like a door to the outside from the staff break room. The, one of the significant differences is having the, the public surrender area. The configuration of the cat area is slightly different, but basically, the concept is the same. There is a large glass area at the front, and, and so it allows 24/7 viewing of adoptable animals. This is a rendering of the bird's eye view of the facility with the public parking out in front, the staff service yard behind. This is the surrender entrance that I was telling you about with its own parking area, and this is the main entrance here. This is a view what it's like from, as seen from HG Mosley Parkway. This is the entrance. It's the tallest space in the facility, because it is the largest, the lobby is the largest space in the building. And this is its counterpart, which is the public surrender area with the public parking in front. This is an example of dog holding with multicolored ceramic glaze tile, resinous floors, and floors that slope to drains, making it very easy to clean with glass at the end in connection to the outside. These are images of a cat adoption. This is a free roaming space for cats that stay there for a longer period of time. It gives us something for the public to be able to look at, and it's nurturing for, for the cats. And this is a dog adoption. The, all the animals in the adoption area are behind glass, which means that at 8:00 in the morning, when staff begins to show up, they can open the doors and the animals are, be able to be viewed for presentation and adoption, while in fact, the cleaning goes on inside without any sort of smell, odor, or noise of what's going on behind the glass. But the whole facility is very visible and transparent. The current estimate for the facility, a roughly 20,000-square-foot facility, is at $250 a square foot. This is contingent on when in fact the project goes out to bid, and the bottom line is, right now, is about $5.1 million. And I'll entertain any questions you have.
Questions to Mr. Conley?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm interested. Remind me, how many pets, how many dogs, and how many cats will those cells hold? The holding area that we're looking at, based on the current plan?
You know, I, I, uh...
Kevin, I think Kevin has it.
Thank you, Kevin. No problem.
Our numbers are sometimes hard to keep track of. It's about 107 dogs and about 68 cats.
Thank you.
Is there room for growth? Because at 107 dogs and 68 cats, we could probably fill that up now.
Well, you, you can, but if you heard the, the talk earlier today with Kathy Byss, she predicts that, and by the way, we have sized the facility for five years out from today. It's not sized with current numbers. But she's, she's the person that said, and she has 30-years experience in this, and she's the executive director of the Aggieland Humane Society, and she says, you know, your numbers are like 10,000. She says the numbers will be close to 6 in four or five years. You will see the numbers beginning to be reduced because of the facility and your ordinances being enforced. That is her expectation.
Can you bring back the, the original print? Because you'll see the, the areas that we can expand on, the actual schematic.
By the way, this is a very large site. This is, right now, this is a, this is an exercise yard, but if you did need to expand, because of the configuration of the building, you could expand this way, you could expand this way very easily. In fact, you could expand this way as well. There, there, you're blessed with more than... There, you're blessed with more than enough land, but I will tell you that the expectation is that this, because of programs you have in place, programs that you're going to have, as well as the visibility that you're going to have with this facility, you will reverse the homeless numbers that you have today and euthanasia.
And I get that, and I guess my question was more or less, and, you know, given her experience with the other communities, we're anticipating servicing within Gregg County?
Yes.
That was factored in?
Yes, ma'am.
So the number, we will reverse the trend?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
One last question. How large is the surrender space? Could you show me that on the schematic?
Sure. It is, that is an updated, you see, this was, this was an older version. This is the new version, the surrender space. Well, it also includes incoming here, but this, this space is like 200 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, it's, people don't linger generally when they surrender animals, but you do have to have a place, and we have a direct connection. In fact, as you asked, we, if you'll notice, there is actually, behind the counter, there is a connection right here to incoming. So from the Sally Port, there are kennels that actually connect to where animals are evaluated from two different sides.
Okay.
Which makes it a very efficient operation.
Thank you.
In terms of the other cities in the county, we don't know for sure that the other cities are going to contract with us to keep animals. What we needed to do first was look at a design. I think the next thing is to really get a, I mean, I see your figures, but to get a real hard figure, so we know exactly what we're talking about. The step from there would be, we know that there's been a commitment made on behalf of the, of the county.
Yes, sir.
But it's also, we have individuals that are interested in contributing to the construction as well. So I would, I would suggest to council that the next step is to, is to engage an architect in order to come up with an actual number, if you will, or to get bids. Exactly how would that process work, Mr. Willard?
I'll ask Kevin or Mr. Bonds to speak to it, but I assume, once council decides on the floor plan they want and the kind of the price, the next step would be to get a design firm to look at it and then to give us some harder costs on what it would cost.
Mr. Willard has it exactly right. What needs to happen is, quite frankly, construction plans, and then you can price that out from there.
Okay. And construction plans would take roughly how long? I think Keith mentioned in a recent meeting, six months. Okay, but did, did, did we also discuss that there's a possibility we could shorten that to four months with an incentive if they complete the, the design in four months?
I think you're putting Mr. Conley on the spot there. Can you do it in four months?
He said yes.
Pressure him up here.
Well, and, and, and the reality that we're dealing with is that, you know, the, the agreement on the property, okay, is to be shovel-ready if we're going to do this in January. Okay, so...
He said you could have a shovel-ready in January. Yes, sir.
So, which would mean we'd already got the bids in and...
Oh, yes.
Know exactly what everything costs.
Sure, sure.
Okay. So what would be our next step, Mr. Bonds?
I think we need to have the budget amended and have the city council approve funding for, obviously, the design, and need some direction or commitment from council that you want to build it.
Okay. But the next step is to, is to...
Actually go through the design process.
Put an action item on the agenda to amend the budget, to put the monies up, to get into the design.
Correct.
Which council, at that point, is still not...
Well, I mean, you wouldn't think we want to spend several hundred thousand dollars on the design.
If you weren't fully committed.
Yes, sir.
Got you. Yes, sir.
The designs, nice design, by the way. If, so if we, as our council decide that we like the looks of it, maybe it's just a little rich, how do you cut around the edges? What do, what do we sacrifice with a lesser size or scope?
Well...
Is it that simple, or is it...
My, my best professional advice to you is there's really, there's nothing in this plan that's an indulgence at all, and the reason...
I didn't imply that by any means.
I'm sorry?
I certainly didn't mean to imply that by any means.
Well, no, well, let me, it is, it is difficult to downsize the facility or to shrink it. I mean, an expedient solution would be, well, just take off a wing and just take off, reduce the number of kennels. I can tell you that the canine habitats are about three times the cost of human space. I mean, and that's what makes the facility so expensive. And if you put it in the context of that, that most of this, 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 we have like 12 different HVAC zones. Over half of them operate 24/7, and that's, that's why the dang thing is so expensive. And that's just a fact of life. When you try to say, make it smaller, this was sized based on the numbers that we were given and projected, you know, five years out, what, what our expectation is. Now, the reality is, as I go around the country, you're absolutely right. It used to be that everybody, oh, we need to make it bigger, bigger. I'm happy to tell you that the trend today is that with municipalities, that their euthanasia numbers are dropping, and the investment with communities like yours in a facility like this and enforcing ordinances along with spay and neuter programs and education is, the trend really has reversed, and we're in a good time. My original client out in West Texas, Midland, has reduced their euthanasia rate per capita by one-half in the, over the last 24 years. And my expectation is similar for, for you folks as you do this. So I'm not, I'm trying to hedge your question. Could you make it smaller? Could you make it less expensive? Yes, you could compromise materials, but in the long term, in terms of lifecycle costs, because water is, and the animals are just so destructive, particularly the dogs. Cats, it's a different ballgame. Cats are pretty manageable, very easy. The challenges in dogs and housing them.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Frost?
We get all this design and ready to go, then this will be bid like any other structure?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can we ask a question?
Just a second. Yes, sir, Mr. Simpson?
We, it, it seems to me that we have drug our feet a little bit on this, so is it possible to have staff come back and let's, in, in the first meeting in April, and let's get, get everything started?
I'm not sure about dragging our feet because there's been a process all along.
Well, yeah, yeah, sure.
And to drag our feet means that we don't come back with an action item to amend the budget to go along with the, so is your, is, I mean, are you suggesting, or is your comment that we need to go ahead and put an item on the agenda?
Yes.
To amend the budget in order for us to begin the process of designing so we can get a construction?
Right.
Is that...
That's it.
Okay. Is everybody else in agreement with that? Okay. So, Mr. Conley, thank you very much. Okay. Did you, was there something? I think I have your card come...
First, since I'm here, so I'll ask you a question.
Come on.
As you have the pictures up here of the, over against the bird's eye view, I saw a lot of parking for people coming in, like myself. You've got a lot of, awful lot of parking out here, and I don't know why you might have at any one time, maybe two or three people bringing dogs and cats in and parking and looking, and it seems like a big expense right there, just that parking spot.
We, we have city ordinances as regards parking, but the other thing is, one of, one of the, the things that makes this piece attractive, this piece of property, is you have this whole Lear Park complex, and one of the things we're really hoping is that, you know, as we have these tournaments, that people come over, you know, and, I mean, this is going to be a very nice facility in, in that area. So we're hoping people come, and, and, you know, you're going to need parking for, for a lot of that, too. You're right, but again, there's, there's ordinances that we have to work with. Okay. If you talk to most of the developers that are building facilities in town, they'll think we always ask for too much parking, but that's, that's part of the ordinance.
That's good, thank you.
Okay. Well, my computer died, so I guess we finished. All right. Now we'll go to consent agenda. Are there, and I do have something on consent agenda, item B. We have a couple of questions, or, so I'm not sure who this was. What is a swine barn?
That's me, Mr. Thompson.
That's you, okay. All right, so I'm going to ask, is Dixie here? Okay. Can someone tell, Laura, what, you want to tell us about the swine barn?
Yes, sir.
Peace.
In the FY 1314 budget process, the city council did approve the rehabilitation of the swine barn at Mont Cobb. We have been working on getting the bid specs out. What you're being asked to do tonight is to accept a donation from Harvest Fest to help pay for half of it.
Okay. All right.
Yes, sir.
Laura, can I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
What is this swine for? Is it for some club, 4H FFA group for animals?
Yes, sir. We, it's 4H FFA, Harvest Fest, any other group that wants to use it. We've had Hallsville out there. They use it to show their animals.
Okay. How old is our current facility?
It's probably 40-plus years old.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion?
May I?
Have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or oppose. Motion passes. Okay. We're going to go to action item to consider resolution author...
Did we approve the consent agenda?
Yes, we did. Okay. Does somebody miss it?
Just checking.
Okay. All right, we're going to, action items, consider resolution, a resolution authorized in temporary closing of a portion of Triple Creek Drive, prepared not to exceed 90 days. City manager David Willard.
Thank you, Mayor and council. On December, or February the 13th, H&amp;T Exploration Company had an agenda item before you, asking for your permission for a Level C permit to drill an oil and gas well within the city limits. The Level C permit did have to come to council, and that request was denied at that meeting. Subsequent to that, I had a meeting with the representatives of H&amp;T Exploration, came and asked if they would have another consideration and to move their location to where it would be in compliance with a Class B drilling location, which, in that case, under oil and gas ordinance, makes it administrative function rather than a city council function if they are within those distances. The thing that makes this a little different is that in order for them to do that, they would have to use a portion of Triple Creek Drive in order to move their location to the required distances for a Class B permit. The oil and gas ordinance that the city of Longview has, on any road closures or temporary closures of roads, that has to come to the city council regardless of the level of permit that they're requiring. So the idea was that before they would go back and spend the time and resources to apply for a Class B location, which would comply with the ordinance, the thought was that if the council chose not to close the road for them, then that would effectively answer the, the question. They could not drill their well instead of going through all that process and then doing the road closure, you know, after everybody had gotten to that point. So that is what's before you tonight. If you choose to close the road, then I believe they're anticipating to go back through the permitting processes, and if it does comport with our oil and gas ordinance, then it would be administratively approved at that time. And if the council chooses not to close the road, then that effectively, and they would not go back, I assume, for a Class B permit. So that's all that we had. I think Mr. Westbrook and other H&amp;T representatives are here. If you have any questions, or I would be happy to try to answer anything.
We have a number of speaker cards that we, at the beginning of the meeting, said that we'd go ahead and hold public comment this time. Let me ask one question before we get started. We asked to know what the, I guess, the, the traffic count is on this particular road.
Yes, if we could look at the other slides. I'm sorry, I, thank you for reminding me. This is a rendering of, or a GPS rendering of Triple Creek Road, the area that they would, would be talking about closing, the cul-de-sac. Of course, the shopping center and the other areas would have full access to those needs, and you're going to be talking about the temporary closure for that, that area there.
Okay. And what was the car, what was the...
Robin, you might do the second one.
Think it was nine per day?
Something nine per day. This shows the turnaround. There is an access point before you get to that area that cars going back there would have ample access to turn around and go back out.
Well, when cars are going back there, what are they going to?
Let's go to the next slide, Robin. Mostly, the front entrance, they can go to the shopping center from the front, but people that have deliveries behind, back there to the restaurants or the other stores.
Right, that's the yellow line.
The yellow line.
Right. But I'm talking about the actual, the loop back there. I mean, is that just for future development or something?
I think future development. It just deadens right there.
Okay. Okay. We're going to go to, since it's a comment. Ray Coats?
I'm the last one to submit. I can get the last one up?
No, you, first one to go. You, you, you sent it in late.
I did, I did. I just wanted to read something that my wife prepared for the, the last time we were here, and opposition to it, we would be in opposition to this also, but for a little different reason. There's more to consider than just blocking off the road, from my perspective, so that the vehicles can get back in. And we're talking about huge, in some cases, heavy vehicles, and how they're going to get there, they're not going to be dropped in by helicopter. They're going to be coming down Judson Road and other places to get to Judson Road and all that. Those kind of vehicles are going to tear up traffic, and that's a cost to the city, if I understand it right, which is part of my taxpayer dollars. So we would be in opposition to it just simply because of how long it's going to take, a lot of other reasons, but is that it deals with sealing that off and letting them come in here and do this. All these vehicles, not just now, but in the future, they're going to be going back there to service that, that site, is going to be causing road damage that we're going to have to pay for. I'm going to leave it at that.
All right, thank you. He lives, Mr. Coats, you want to show Mr. Manley where you live? You, you live in Warwick Circle?
Yes.
Or Hoyt?
Does this, does this mouse show it? Yeah. This is, this is probably Warwick Circle right here. I live in this, one of these right in here.
Okay.
So it's going to be, yeah, this is Hoyt coming down here. No, that's Eaton Drive, probably.
Right.
And then, is this Hoyt?
Yeah.
Okay, so you come off of Hoyt, it'd be about four houses down, so we're, we're going to be right in this area right here.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Johnny Stafford?
Thank you. I don't live in this area here, and I'm not directly involved in the matter here in this area. I am involved with H&amp;T Exploration. Mr. Borman has very little experience in oil and gas. From my knowledge, he has operated three wells, two, one which he, was involved in the drilling of the well. The other two wells were acquired afterwards, so he has like one well previously to drilling this well, that he's been involved in the drilling process. Okay? I've looked at all the permitting files at the Railroad Commission. They are not correct. He's not capable of properly permitting the well himself. He will have to have Watson's Report Service do it for him. Mr. Borman, I'm in the units that he operates there in Tatum, Texas. I'm at Tatum on my mother's side. Our family founded the town in 1801, and we settled the area in 1838. We don't get mineral rights from that, and we're, we're having a lot of difficulty with Mr. Borman and a couple of the operators out there where we're trying to forward our art mineral claim in the area. Mr. Borman drilled, the well that was drilled caused to be drilled by Mr. Borman, he drilled the well. He didn't contact me, a mineral owner, in the, in the unit. I get paid from H&amp;T now, a small amount. I, driving around out there, looking at the wells, found the well site. I spent about 30 days researching, 30 days, you know, like 40 hours a week for 30 days, before I found out who H&amp;T was, where they were located at, and whether or not I was in the unit. Then I contacted Mr. Borman and asked him to pay me. He refused, so I sued him in Russ County, okay? He still refused to pay me, so I contacted the Railroad Commission, and I made allegations about it to the Railroad Commission and threatened to file a complaint to the Railroad Commission.
Excuse me, Mr. Stafford. What council is... What council is working on is whether or not to close the street. I understand you have some personal dealings with Mr. Borman H&amp;T, but your suits and what's going on there, that's really not for this particular meeting, okay?
Yeah.
So, if you're, I mean, if you have something to say about the closing of the road, et cetera, I think that's appropriate. But I don't think it's appropriate, you know, talking about your lawsuit and the things you have going on.
Well, the thing about it is, if you're dealing with somebody who, whose reputation can be called into question.
Okay, I think you've already done that.
And who has very little experience, then, you know, I think the environmental concerns and such that the landowners bring up are valid because you don't have a man with enough experience to really tell you how that well's gonna go in.
Okay. There's, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Bill Burlingame.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I live on Warwick Circle. I've lived there for approximately seventeen, eighteen years. And we moved into the city instead of the country to, because we knew that we had good people like you to protect our interest and our value of our property that we've invested in. Warwick Circle is right between the two cities. It's right in the middle of town. I think someone else said there's gonna be a tremendous amount of traffic coming in there. I think we discussed at the last council meeting that there's gonna be ongoing noise. So, I'm, I've got a business degree. I'm not opposed to someone making a profit. But if that profit is at the expense of me and the other voter, or citizens in Warwick Circle, then I have a problem with that. That's gonna devalue all of those houses in that whole neighborhood. The trucks, the lights, the noise. I think there's a place and a time for everything and I think that that is not the proper place for an oil well. You guys have the opportunity to deny this for a second time by not allowing that closure. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Louis Hobbs.
I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this issue once again. I'm requesting the city council representatives not approve this resolution to temporarily close a portion of Triple Creek Drive. Closure this road would negatively impact public safety by restricting access to the rear of the Triple Creek Shopping Center. If, for instance, a fire started, say, in the kitchen of Posados Cafe, the fire trucks would not be able to access the fire hydrant that's located directly behind Posados and they also would not have access to the kitchen area. They'd have to, only way they could access it is through the front of the shopping center. I also like to point out, as many of you are well aware, drilling operations are very hazardous and we could result in a fire from the drilling operation. It could result in a spill, which would be an environmental issue with a creek nearby, or you could have an accident on the drilling rig. And so, with the street blocked, you know, that'd be a condition where you would need immediate access by city emergency personnel and they would not have that access because of the blockage of the drive. Also, ninety days is a long time to have public safety adversely impacted by this road closure. Also, since this resolution allows up to one year for the road closure to start, the owner of the property could not initiate any development of the property for at least one year due to the uncertainty of a potential road closure. It would be better if this well was sited at a location where road closure is not required. However, the only reason to approve this resolution is to allow the drilling of an oil or gas well near Triple Creek Drive. In a letter from H&amp;T Exploration to Jim Newman dated March 20th, 2014, the new well site is gonna be thirty-six feet south and eighty-one feet west of the original location. I've got copies of that letter if you would like to see it. This new location is just barely outside the 300-foot buffer zone that requires a Level C permit. All of the issues raised during the February 13th city council meeting are still valid. H&amp;T Exploration is still siding this well as close to the backyards of the homes on Hoyt Street as possible instead of in a location farther south that had less of an impact on residences. H&amp;T has eighty acres in its lease block on which to site the well. This oil well's gonna disturb our quiet neighborhood both during drilling operations and production with excessive noise, traffic, noxious fumes, and the slightly production equipment. The home values on Hoyt and Warwick Circle will all be decreased by the presence of this equipment after the well is drilled. Again, it's unlikely that during the drilling operation that the noise level can be kept below seventy-two decibel limit, 300 feet from the well. And if you do produce a well and you've gotta recover the gas and you use the compressor, the noise levels have to be kept below sixty-five decibels.
Okay, sir. I'm sorry, but your time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wes Odom.
Hello, council members. Mayor Dean. I realize that this is somewhat of a cursory issue, the road closing. And unlike my neighbor, I haven't been in Warwick Circle for eighteen years. I just purchased this home here about nine months ago. And as you can see, equipment moving in and out, noise, as well as the eventual oil well, if that comes to fruition. I'm against it and I just wanted to state my opinion here. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Okay. Jim Malone. Good afternoon, Mr. Malone.
Hi, Mayor, Council members. I live on Eden Drive right now. One, the first house on Eden, right past Warwick Circle. My backyard backs up to Warwick Circle. There's a household workshop. There's a creek that runs between my house and Warwick Circle that runs down behind Thorn Tree, that creek that runs through there. The back of my house, the backyard, is very private. I see raccoons back there. I see posies back there. I see hawks back there, very wildlife. I wanted to move. I bought a lot on Warwick Circle this past summer. The lot that, the last lot, it's all the way back in the, it's the West Warwick Circle. The only lot in the middle of Warwick Circle, where Triple Creek backs up to it, right on the other side. I specifically went to the city to ask about floodplains because there was a problem there. I was told that the whole area behind my home, part of the floodplain comes onto my property, very small edge. I was no, had no problem with that because it would be a fence back there and then there's a creek back there. But he said the whole area behind that and Triple Creek is a floodplain. He said there's nothing gonna be built back there. He didn't mention anything about an oil well, obviously. But had I known that there was gonna be an oil well put back there, there's no way I would've bought the lot on Warwick Circle to move. The reason I'm saying that my neighborhood is quiet. It's in the middle of town. It's convenient to everything. It's just a nice, quiet area and there's no possible way I would, I would move around the corner, 200 yards, to a new place. And I was noticing here, the gentleman that wants to do this, he says right here that, oh, right. Let's see, he says, "The work wouldn't cause heavy environmental damage and was necessary at the proposed location less than 300 feet from two homes." 300 feet. Let me ask you, would you like a well 300 feet from your home? I don't think so.
Excuse me, sir, but that is the city ordinance and there are many people in our community that do have that. So, I just wanna make sure it's clear that is just the ordinance.
I understand that this is right in the very center of the city of Longview and I don't see any oil wells in the city of Longview anywhere. And he also points out that if he drills this well, if he drills this well, he's also gonna drill one south of Peggy's Place, evidently from his plans is what he's saying here. So, I just, the environmental part, the traffic, the heavy equipment, the neighborhoods, I just think it's, I don't think it's necessary. I think it's not a good thing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tom Sweeney. I wanna make sure you didn't go to sleep over there.
Mr. Mayor.
Hello, Tom. City Manager, council members.
Well, I don't wanna see that street closed because I own the property that that street accesses. And I have a planned development that I gave you a plat of. It was approved by the city council in 1982 for a PD office park. I've also given you a plat, you should have it on your desk there, that shows the buildings. There's five buildings. I don't, have y'all been out there and looked at this site?
We've here all the time.
Well, I'm the only one that drives back there all the time because I've owned it for fifteen years.
So, you're the one that's the nine cars? You're going nine times a day?
That's me. I'm the nine cars, okay? But I go back there, I mean, we bought this, Mr. Newman and myself, to develop about fifteen years ago. And along came FEMA with their floodway maps and all of a sudden, the five acres in the floodway and we can't do anything with it. City engineer at that time said, "Well, you can wait till we redo the maps and maybe you'll get to use it." Well, guess what? We're about a month or two away from FEMA map being amended and it's all gonna be usable. It's gonna be in the floodplain, but we can use it. Now, I know that mental interest owners supposedly take precedence over surface right people, like me. But you know what? I'd like to see the council go to the mat on this one and not allow this to be turned into an oil field. I don't care if you get sued by the federal government or whoever. I'd just like to see it go to the mat for me and the city of Longview. Thank you.
All right, Tom. Ron Borman Jr. Ron Borman Jr., did you wanna?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, come on. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished council, citizens of Longview. I just wanna say a few things. I think Mr. Stafford, you know, said a few things that most of which weren't relevant. However, I do wanna state that I've drilled five wells in Tatum, operate nine wells currently and one well in the city of Longview. With respect to, I believe it was Mr. Hobbs' concern about fire access, there are a couple of ways. First of all, this is a service road that takes care of the needs of the various businesses located here. There is a fire lane that's 20-foot wide that goes right down the back of this property. And the developer and designer that Mr. Sweeney referred to in terms of his plat, provided for secondary access to this property, which was a great idea, in my opinion, that went across this lot here and connects to Hoyt Street. So, there's a 20-foot wide fire lane here, which ties into this fire lane. And there's an emergency access or a secondary access, I believe is the way it's platted, right across this lot. And you can find that, and I brought copies for everyone, that's at volume 1550, page 342 of the deed records of Gregg County, Texas. Mr. Sweeney, this week submitted a development plat. It's a preliminary site plan plat where he plans on building a 12,000-square-foot commercial building here and making a parking lot out of all of the remaining land. So, for you folks who are concerned about the animals and the birds, I'm with you. The well pad that we'll be making is relatively small compared to a commercial development and the animals are free to roam at their will. As the mayor and everybody that lives here know, there are hundreds of wells in Gregg County, I mean, in Longview, Texas. I brought copies of the easement and the dedication to the city signed by Mitch Henderson, our mayor at the time, if anyone would like a copy. I think what we're getting down to here is individual property rights. Everybody's got a house and a yard. What are we gonna do with these folks that own 75 acres of minerals in the middle of Gregg County with wells all around them? How much is that worth? Who's gonna pay them for it if you don't let us have a chance to drill our well? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Ricky Cook. Ricky Cook. Gone once, gone twice. Mr. Cook, are you in the building? Okay. Hattie Phipps.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name's Hattie Phipps. I live at 118 East Tork Drive. I've been there since 1977 and the only thing behind my house is the old Wal-Mart's and whatever, dumpsters, and crows, possums, coons, blackbirds, and everything. I haven't seen a deer. I haven't seen a crane. I haven't seen anything. And I'm a widow woman. I lost my husband almost five years ago. And to me, it would be a benefit to the city to have a well drilled because they would get taxes off of it and according to what the people that's got up and said, the city of Longview needs revenue. And that's a good way to make revenue. And anybody that comes in and puts an oil well in, they have to clean up after it, they have to put it right back like it was. And I know there's one in front of Target that's just as clean as it can be around it. And there's one right down on McCann Road behind East Texas Banking Trust, two of them. And they're just as clean as they can and they are in the city limits. And they don't make no noise and everything. And I am for an oil well here in Longview. I say, bring it on. Drill, baby, drill.
There you go. All right. Susan Tanner.
Drill, baby, drill. Who, is that a? Oh, yeah.
Thank you all for hearing from us again. I live on Hoyt Drive directly in front of where this well is to be located. As I said before, this would be in my front door when I look out every day. Aside from the things that we brought up before, moving this well a few feet is not gonna change the fact that it's gonna affect the environment and the neighborhood and our property values. I guess some of the things that make me wonder about we're closing a road that don't use real often, but yeah, some of us do use it. Where else would we close a road to build something? That's one thing, you know, that I'm wondering. And also, there has been development planned for that area. I bought my house just about the same time that this was bought and set up for development. At the time, there was even talk of having retirement housing back there along the front edge up here, having some office buildings, some quiet things that would be good for a neighborhood, wouldn't necessarily impact it. Some of the things that concern me about a well going in are the things I've been hearing about fracking, for instance, which, nothing's been said about it. But with everything that's going on about it, it scares me. I used to live out by Wink. I don't know if you've heard of the Wink sink. It was one of the first sinkholes that came up. They didn't know why. It swallowed whole areas, houses, and so forth. And that's in the middle of nowhere. So, some of that kinda stuff does scare me. And as I said, losing the value in property does not help. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Don Westbrook.
Good evening, Council. And I don't know that I need to speak. I did sign up because the lady asked me to up front. I am an attorney here with Coglin Croson and I do represent H&amp;T Exploration. And I thought, the only thing I would add on the road closing, we were trying to anticipate any questions that the council may have. And so, we interviewed all of the tenants in that strip center there, that shopping center. that strip center there, that shopping center, and without exception, they all stated that they had no objection to that road being closed and that they all signed a statement. We have yet to get the statement from Posados because they have a corporate office that has to approve it, but the manager said he had no objections. None of the tenants there said that their delivery trucks make the loop around that cul-de-sac back there, that they go directly as it's shown there in the yellow line. And so none of them are gonna be negatively affected. That was without exception. And just so it's clear, the part that we were suggesting that would be closed is, if I can get it right, right there, only that part right there. It's only two hundred and fifty feet by, two hundred and seventy feet by a hundred and fifty-five feet, right at the end of that cul-de-sac. And it's gonna be closed for ninety days, and then it's gonna be put back the way it was. So I don't see that there's gonna be much disruption caused by the closing of that road. The investigation, that doesn't surprise me, nine cars, the investigation we did, it's, all we saw was Longview's version of Lover's Lane, and that's, I think, my experience is teenagers will figure out an alternative venue if it's closed. But I'm happy, I wasn't here the last time that this permit was considered, but I did read the transcript, so all the questions that the council had at that time and the questions that were mentioned, the statements that were mentioned, I am prepared to answer any of those questions if they came up, but that was the only reason I signed up.
Okay. Well, we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, I don't have any other speaker cards. Council, questions? Discussions? Yes, sir, Ms. Garrett.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor?
I'm okay, ma'am.
Can I ask Mr. Willard a question, our city manager? Mr. Willard, if we don't approve this action item tonight, what are some legal ramifications from this particular denying this?
Well, I refer to Mr. Finley on legal question, legal matters.
Mr. Finley?
Do you want to go into executive session to talk about this?
I don't think, I wouldn't think so. I mean, he just...
I don't know. I mean, there potentially could be some, but I mean...
Okay. What level...
I think council's pretty much aware of that.
Yeah. There would be the ability of them to be able to develop their well. That would be the issue.
Oh, okay. What level of permit are you searching for, Mr. Willard?
It's my understanding they would apply for a Level B permit, which would be within the oil and gas ordinance.
Three hundred feet?
Outside three hundred feet.
Outside three hundred feet. Thank you, Mr. Willard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions, other comments?
Got a comment.
Okay.
In review, what we did last time with the Level Three, it got there from, well, B, it got from B to C because it was less than three hundred feet from the closest residents, which there were two. Now then, in order to get approval, they had to get waivers, 100% waivers from all close by. Well, they got one out of the two. So that automatically threw it into C, which says it has to go to the city council for approval because it was closer than three hundred feet to the residents. Okay, I, for one, that's my district, I thought it was too close in there. There's too much around, too many residents around, and I read part of a section of C which allowed us to deny it. And the company did what I figured they would do. They came, they considered it, and they came back and moved it to where it is now, three hundred and one feet from the closest residents. Okay, so that puts it back into B. And the only thing now is, we could, they want to close that section there where the cul-de-sac is for setting some of the equipment there for the rig. So that's how we got here where we are now. Now, if we approve it, they can drill. If we deny it, then they have some alternatives. Now, they said, the first time when they put it there, I suggested, well, can you directionally drill? They say we don't directionally drill. We're not directionally drillers. But they did come back and move it to three hundred and one feet. I understand they're gonna directionally drill back to the original point. Go underground and drill, directionally drill, which is a common thing today, which is making our oil production go up tremendously and gas. So that's what they did. And so if we deny it, then it says, we're blocking them from reaching their minerals. And I know what, in the state of Texas, the minerals take precedence over the surface. And people that buy the surface know that. Now, I don't know how old this lease is. It probably was written sixty years ago. I don't know. But that's what the lease in Texas, when you have mineral rights, then you have precedence over the surface rights. And what we get into, if we block it, I don't know. Mr. Attorney, what was that word you told me? Inverse what?
Taking, maybe. I mean, I can't speculate on what they're gonna do inverse taking.
Yeah, right. Well, there's a thing called inverse taking, which means that you block somebody from drilling, I understand that means that the other can come to you, well, the minerals are there, you're gonna have to pay me for them. So that's where we stand right now. That's the way I understand. And I don't like drilling the well there anymore than anybody else does. And, but I don't know which way to jump on this one, because I understand what the people say. Now, as far as values of homes, I can show you nearly million-dollar homes right next to, you can throw a rock to an oil well over here in the city of Longview. There's a lot of them scattered around. Sidney, where's that one down there by you? It's right by...
It's in the new Wildwood Villa Estates that has three hundred-plus-thousand-dollar homes within ten foot of each side of it.
Set right on Mosley Parkway. That's east Texas. That's what we get into when you get into minerals in Texas, that's what happens.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Allen.
Drilling a well is noisy, expensive, dangerous, and everything else. Now, the time we're talking about here is ninety days, is that, so they have ninety days, ninety-day closure to drill this well. And it's noisy, and it can be dangerous, and it's not a, it's not, you don't sit out and watch them just for the fun of it. It's not something. However, once they complete the well, they move the equipment off. Like I said, there's a well that I walk by at least two or three times a week in Wildwood. Now, this well was drilled before most of the houses were in, but since then, the property around the well has been drilled. They've got a, what I'd call a low-profile pumping unit, and Tom, you and I have looked at it. There's an eight-foot fence, and you can walk by that well at six o'clock in the morning, and you don't know whether it's running or not unless you stop and look through the fence. It's absolutely quiet. You don't see it either. Now, whether Mr. Borman would use this type of unit, I don't know. But, you know, Longview, Texas, east Texas is built on mineral rights. If it wasn't for the mineral rights and if it wasn't for the oil industry, we wouldn't be here right now. And we need to consider that. There is a large green belt between this area and the houses that are directly to the west of it. That green belt has been there a long time. It's a substantial green belt. I don't see any reason that that area, that that green belt would be harmed in any way. If you go north, there's an opening there that goes out on Hoyt, which is open, and the lady that lives across Hoyt would be looking through that open area. I'm not sure if that's a park or why it hasn't been developed, but there's a large open area there. However, once this well is completed, and I'm just talking here hypothetically, if it's drilled, you're just gonna have a pumping unit, and I don't know if we could ask for a fence to be put around this pumping unit, if we could, can we, we could... I would say if they put an eight-foot, non-visible fence around the unit and they use what I call a low-profile pumping unit, I'm not sure if Mr. Borman just happens to be one, that you're not gonna be able to hear it and you're not gonna be able to see it, because I walk by one every morning, and I have to stop and walk over to the fence and look in to see if the unit's running.
Okay.
All right.
Let me, Mr. Finley, we're here to consider opening, or excuse me, closing a road. In terms of the permit process on the well, does that come back to the city?
If the road is closed and effectively, if they meet the requirements of the ordinance under, for Class B, then the manager can approve that.
Okay. But as far as what Mr. Allen's suggesting in trying to make it, you know, more, you know, friendly to the neighborhood, are there things that can be... Mr. Wright?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The ordinance would give the manager the authority to impose additional restrictions on the permit, and they would have to start over with a new permitting process so he could impose additional restrictions intended to reduce noise or dust or help protect public health and safety.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have something you wanted to say about that?
I just wanted to make a point of clarification on the way the resolution's written and the ninety-day request. That, should the council approve that road closure, that ninety-day period does not start tonight with your vote. It would start at a date when they move their equipment in after the permitting process is all done, so I wanted to make that...
When they go to...
When the operations start.
Okay, council, anybody else have anything? Then we'll entertain a motion.
I believe that be not approved.
So you motioned to deny?
To deny.
Okay, I have a motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion, nine, a second. All in favor, say aye for deny.
Aye.
Please by showing hands. Okay, so that motion doesn't pass. So we need another motion now for approval.
I move for approval.
All right, I have a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, and a second, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion approved. Okay. Items of community interest. Mr. Sims.
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Mayor, I was at the Boys and Girls Club on, last week...
I heard you did a heck of a job.
And I'm gonna thank...
All right, hold on one second.
Oh, okay.
Let's let the council chamber clear.
They don't care about what you say.
No, they only will.
Okay, Garrett, you might have to talk a little bit loud.
Okay. All right, here we go. Well, on last week, Mr. Mayor, like I was saying previously, I was out at the Boys and Girls Club, and Officer Jeff Hall, Fire Assistant Chief Curtis Shaw, and Chief Roger Grove were talking about the police and fire explorer program. So it went pretty great. Officer Jeff Hall had a drug-sniffing doll out there so the kids could take a look at, so it was pretty interesting. I think they kind of enjoyed it. And, let's see, what else I got? I got something else. I need to know who I need to talk to about trying to adopt the street. I wanted to try to adopt the street from Avalon to Nelson Street to clean that area up and keep paper picked up in that area.
Okay. I would suggest we get with Ms. Hill, but also, because we usually park, but I would think, Gary, you want to try to find an organization.
Okay.
Sometimes it's a church in the neighborhood, they're always looking for projects.
Okay.
And I would strongly suggest that you talk to some of the churches in that area to see if they might be interested in adopting that area.
Right, okay. Because I was talking to the Boys and Girls Club also about trying to have some of the kids to come out and help pick up trash.
That would be good.
Just keep the neighborhood clean.
Well, I can tell you, when, in the Rotary Club, when we do the, you know, the trash pickup days in Longview...
Yes.
I used to bring my youngest daughter with me. And kids having to pick up trash like that, they think twice about throwing stuff out the window of the car...
Definitely for sure.
And they get on mom and daddy about throwing stuff out the car. Daddy, do I have to pick that up? I said, you sure do. And I don't remember her ever throwing anything out the car again.
Well, that's great.
So it's a good plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The Longview Metro Chamber of Commerce will host sidewalk art this weekend. It'll be downtown Longview beginning at 9:00 a.m. And also, there will be an evening event. I believe tickets are about thirty-five dollars, and if I'm wrong, I'm sorry. But do support this new Chamber of Commerce. It's a new addition. And for people who don't understand, a lot of times, most communities, many especially larger areas, have several. In the metroplex, they have hundreds of metro chambers of commerce. So do get engaged, get involved, and go out and see what the Longview Metro Chamber of Commerce is about. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Frost?
I just want to congratulate and applaud Ms. Hill and her Parks Department and the citizens of Long, the staff of Longview. She used firemen and police and whatever in that basketball tournament we had, that girls and boys' basketball tournament. That was tremendous. It was very interesting. So I want to congratulate all those folks that were involved in that, because the city employees did all of that. They set up the brackets, set up the games, and used, I don't know, fifteen to nineteen gems all over the city, and they did a tremendous job. And we had a lot of people here at that time, on that weekend. Somebody said eighteen hundred rooms and so forth. So they did, and they did a tremendous job.
Congratulations to the parks. Thank you. Mr. Richard?
Yes, sir. Two things I'd like to say, but before I do, I wanted to give credit to Angela Cohen and the entire Finance Department for this clean audit that we just received. This is the fourth audit I've been through in the four years I've been here, and it's a real credit to Angela and everyone who works in the Finance Department, as I've been told. You know, I grew up in Alabama where it's finance, but she told me it's the Finance Department. Anyway, congratulations to everyone for a clean audit. Secondly, this is a picture from the Amberwood community, and anyone who's been watching or coming to our council committees know that I've really been behind this whole Amberwood project. And I don't know if Terry's back in the thing can show, if I can show him, get him to show this on... Thank you. Amberwood is a great use of our federal, state, and local tax money to create housing for working-class folks in a really good neighborhood, and Amberwood is a great community citizen also because they got behind this project where you have six professional actors, actors, artists, and about a dozen kids who also want to be artists to paint what otherwise would have been a hundred-and-twenty-foot wall long, cinder wall. And it started this past Saturday. There's gonna be two more days. There's gonna be a big formal grand opening, I think, around sometime in May. But it's a great community for our city. It's up on Bill Owens and Hawkins, excuse me, McCann and Hawkins, and they're actually looking at doing another project here in town, the Pinnacle folks. So congratulations and big thanks to them. Secondly, I mentioned last week that there was the Community Health Corps Dinner with a Hero last Saturday, and I'm proud to say that, ooh rah, we had one of our fellow jarheads, Lieutenant Colonel Jay Copelman speak, and this, and he wrote a book called From Baghdad with Love, and it's all about a bunch of Marines in a combat zone and how they saved a five-week-old puppy, and that's actually the dog, fully grown. And what Colonel Copelman talked about was the fact that there's six hundred homeless people every night in our country, six hundred thousand homeless people every night in our country. Twenty-five percent of them, folks, a hundred-and-fifty thousand, are veterans. It's terrible. And I'm doing, I'm personally doing whatever I can. I volunteer at Community Health Corps. They have some great veterans programs to help with the homeless vets there. And I want to encourage anyone who's watching or here tonight to please support them with your time and your money. I think Community Health Corps does great work. And for people who always ask, who's Community Health Corps? Well, that's the old Sabine Valley, and everybody goes, oh, yeah, that's who they are. So Community Health Corps, great citizen in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, sir.
I think what Rain, excuse me, Wayne Forrest talked about on the Frost, 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 Forrest, Wayne, all right. This water is getting kind of strong around here. Anyway, I want to say thank you to the Parks Department for the wonderful job they've done in attracting these athletic events to the city of Longview. It's really, it's a win-win-win situation all the way around, and I just, I want to say thank you again to the Parks Department for that.
Okay. All right, Longview Public Library to host Celebrate Authors, which Ms. Victoria Wilson talked about today. Authors Festival will be held Thursday, April 3rd through Saturday, April 5th. Activities include book signings, keynote speakers, workshops, and more. The seating is limited, so register now at library.longviewtexas.gov. The Spring Trash Bash and Recycles Day will be held Saturday, April 12th. Residents are invited to volunteer to clean your community. Electronics and tire recycling will also be available. Electronics and tire recycling will also be available. To volunteer during the Trash Bash, please contact 903-237-1390. To learn more about recycling opportunities, please contact sanitation at 903-237-1250. The city of Longview will host a job fair on Wednesday, April 16, from 4 to 7 at the Maud Cobb Convention Activity Complex. The public is invited to learn about public service job opportunities ranging from public works to fire and police and other city government departments as well. Learn more at texas-longviewtexas.gov. Another one we got today, Red Oak Baptist Church, First Baptist Church, and Mount Calvary Baptist Church will host a combined service this Sunday, March 30, at 10:30 a.m. at the Broughton Park, 801 Martin Luther King Boulevard. Lunch will be provided. For more information, please contact First Baptist Church at 903-758-0681. And also to talk about the Metro Chamber of Commerce program this week, this weekend at Longview Museum, they will also be having a kidney bean cook-off. I was contacted by former council member and very good friend Tony Powell about whether I would, you know, participate in cooking the kidney beans. I had to call my wife and ask about the kidney beans. Where I'm from, they call them red beans. So I said, Tony, I don't know if those people ready for some Louisiana red beans, but anyway, we're going to be, that's going to be at noon time at the museum. So y'all, please come out and, you know, support that. I want to say one other thing, and then I'm not going to have another word to say about the events of this past week. It's been very stressful, and it was nothing ever expected to splash back on our community. And I think anybody knows me, I'm the biggest cheerleader of Longview, and I will always be that way. But I want to make sure that Mr. Jim Trim, who's been a personal adversary of mine since being elected mayor, that I will not resign. And in business, in as mayor, you have to make hard decisions. And there's a lot of soul-searching that goes on. And I say my prayers and ask for, you know, spiritual guidance when I make decisions. And I'll continue doing that, and I'll continue representing Longview until my term expires in May of 2015. Thank you very much. Did you have something? Meeting adjourned.